Welcome to Pittsburgh City Council reconvened budget hearing meetings. And today we have two things to do. One is to talk about the Parks Tax Trust Fund and then go over the budget and recommendations from Park or Recreations. Let's do the the park. Let's do the Park Tax Fund first. Mike?
Thank you. So the Parks Tax Trust Fund has been a topic of conversation at this table for a number of years, but 2022 will mark the first year we're spending anything from the fund. The Parks Tax Trust Fund holds revenue received from the half mil increase of local property taxes that was approved by referendum in November of 2019. Expenditures can be used on improvements, maintenance, creation and operations of public parks, improving park safety, providing equitable funding for parks in underserved neighborhoods, securing matching funds and services from grants. And it's subject to city council's authorization. As of yesterday, the Trust Fund had a balance of about nine and a half million. For 2022, we anticipate spending $10.8 million out of the Trust Fund. Out of that, one and a half million dollars will be going towards salaries. There's 27 employees anticipated in that Trust Fund for next year. I think three or four of them are existing employees that have been transferred out of the operating budget to the Trust Fund, but the other 24-ish should be new. In addition to the, the operating things out of the Trust Fund, there's also capital, major capital projects. That five and a half million dollars would be going towards park reconstruction using the Parks Tax Trust Fund dollars. And there's also a impact on the capital budget because about $2 million will be transferred from the Parks Tax Trust Fund into capital, capital vehicle acquisition account by pickup trucks and dump trucks and whatnot for the expanded activities. I don't want to go through everything on the, the park reconstruction list, but if Councilman Wilson wants to bring that up again, this is the right meeting for it. That's all I have budgetarily. We have DPWN, Parks and Rec here.
Yes, so Councilman Colquitt or I, either one of us actually could chair this meeting because it's split between the two departments. There is the Park and Recreation on one side and Public Works on the other side. And so I want to give Public Works, you're online, so and Parks and Recreation is with us. So that will start off with our online friends. Anything you want to add? Or is there's a present? I'm not sure which one of you has a presentation or who's going to lead us through this. Park Recreations or?
I can take the lead. I don't have a presentation per se, but I will say I worked with, you know, previous Director Chapman on this at the beginning of the year in these conversations as well as Acting Director Vargas. I think that the from my perspective, when we were going through this process earlier in the year, we had figured that there was always going to be this, this kind of split of you know, operating expenses in terms of staff, in terms of equipment, in terms of basic maintenance. And then there was this kind of capital side. And so I'd advise everybody involved that, you know, we had kind of identified what the value of dollar was for capital and those projects would get adjudicated, you know, through the normal capital budget process. So I'm happy to talk about those things there. And looking at this in terms of what staffing we were doing, you know, I think it's important to note that there are, certainly are people that perform regular parks maintenance in, in those public works divisions are fully committed to working in, in the parks year round. There's also some classes of employees that work in the parks sometimes. And those classes of employees would be folks like, you know, some of our cement finishers and laborers in our construction division, some of our tree pruners who are working both kind of in our street trees and then in our parks assisting with forestry operations. So there are some classes of employees that were located in public works operating budget related to pool maintenance where all, all of our pools are located in the city park that we felt it might be advantageous to move those folks over to the Trust Fund. And then we would take those transfers and use that as an opportunity to create positions for pruner, for cement finisher whereby we would then be, you know, supplementing work that happens in the park. And so we were still kind of, you know, speaking true to the, to that piece of it. And so really that's kind of my, my short presentation on it. I'm more than happy to answer any council's questions.
Sure, I just had a couple of things I wanted to add specific to the money that would be coming to the Parks and Recreation Department. Two things that we were really thinking about. One is the user experience across all of our programmed areas. So there are specific things like being able to have, you know, good functioning gym equipment for the folks who come through our weight rooms, having the ability to make sure that anything we're doing in one center can happen in all centers. And that would include things like rec to tech, our pools and the pool experience that folks have. So upgrading some amenities like the lockers. I don't know the last time anyone's been to Highland Park, but those are in dire need of, of repair and, and upgrade. And what it'll do is increase the user experience, the direct experience that residents are having in our facilities pretty immediately. And there are things that we just haven't had the ability to, to do before. And on top of that, we've also been thinking about our internal capacity. So what's really going to help us as it relates to being able to expand the work that we do and expand programming? And that's where the few positions, I think we have three positions that are for our department in this budget. It's specific to wanting to be able to take the good work that we're doing and increase how we're able to do it and where we're able to do it. So those are the kind of the two considerations that we had been discussing as it relates to the money that goes to the Parks and Rec Department out of the Trust Fund or out of the Parks Trust Fund.
Anything else? All right, so we're joined by Councilwoman Strausberger, Councilwoman Gross online in person. We have also person Colquitt, Wilson, Councilwoman Vale. So let's start off with our online council people. Let's, I'll do it in kind of the order I see them, in order I name them. Councilwoman Strausberger, anything from you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for being here today. I just wanted to clarify, these 24 new positions, these are due positions that would not have been new positions were it not for the $10 million being spent out of the taxes collected this year. Is that correct? Or would they have been new positions anyway? I'm, I'm trying to just get a sense of how the money is being allocated.
Yeah, they were only, go ahead.
I just want to answer, this is Luanne Haram, the Assistant Director of the Senior Program for Parks. I just want to answer on behalf of Parks and Recreation. We have two positions, three positions in, we have, out of the positions, we have four of them. Three of them are new positions for our department and one is a position that already would exist as a recreation leader one.
And then the three, to answer your question, oh, sorry. No, just had, go ahead. I was just going to add to answer your question, those three positions would not, we would not have them.
We have three in one so far. Public Works?
Yes, so we have approximately one, four, five of these positions are, or sorry, six of these, seven of these positions, pulling up on the map, seven of these positions are existing positions that are transferred over and the remaining are all new positions that would not be funded without the Parks Tax. Additionally, with those transfers, all those transfers created new positions for work force that are in, directly in, that support parks in some fashion. So as I mentioned, tree, tree pruner and cement finisher. So those are, those are an additional four, I believe. So that would not have been funded otherwise.
But if you then created, all the ones you transferred in, created new positions to replace them to do something else internally, right?
Correct, but those positions that they replaced internally, the way I would classify that is, like I said, cement finisher and tree pruner were two positions where, you know, you know, approximately half of that workload is directly related to parks. So it's not like I took this position and say, it's not like I took the Parks Tax Position and when we did the budget transfer that I create, used that to create something non-parks related. They were still parks, it was, they were still parks related, just not to the intensity of the folks that are located in the Parks Tax.
I hear the math, you, you, at the very minimum is about, if you take both the new staff positions and the old staff positions, at least somewhere between 20 to 22 of them are new, would be new hires.
Absolutely.
If I'm doing the math in my head right.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Strausberger.
Thank you. No, you answered my question. I'm just glad to see that, that we are able to hire staff internally with some of this money. I mean, I know that there was just a significant amount of public, you know, public polarization around the tax itself. And I'm glad to see that we're hiring so many new positions and I hope that that could continue. So the, the second question, I'm not sure how we can really get to this because positions are positions, but then it's the, I guess it's the parks themselves that are that can be, the parks and the sort of projects themselves that really can be measured against this. And that is sort of a a rubric to determine equity and need and all the different things that, you know, we were talking about throughout the debate around this, this tax and whether to sort of ratify the referendum as accounts as a body. What are we, what kind of rubric or what kind of considerations are being used currently to determine which projects to focus on? Is there one? Are we using one? Is it all based on need or is there some sort of other sort of like watershed intersectional equity kind of components?
There is, I mean, the original study, we referenced that in terms of that, that equity conversation, which took all those factors into watershed, environmental condition, you know, response to call to invest in basic maintenance, so which we consider as like things like replacing a playground or, you know, repairing a basketball court, you know, things of those issues. So, so we do factor that in. You know, we, we present that information via the capital budget process. So, you know, we hand over that, that information to OMB and then it's deliberated in those capital budget forms that we have.
And so is that currently baked into the process as sort of mandate or requirement that you're aware of, at least in your phase of it? Or is it in another phase? Is it something that, I guess what I'm trying to get to is 15 years from now, when many of the people who are, who are here now at the onset of this, the implementation of this tax might not be here. Will this be baked into the process and remain in the process? Is that, is it kind of in place and that's in a codified way?
Councilwoman, if I could, they're currently following the CPFC process, so the, the capital scoring, so the things that are highly ranked make it into the regular capital budget. The things that do not are then ranked against each other within the Parks Trust Fund. So the, the process is codified, but the process for this specific trust fund is not, if that makes sense.
Okay. That's helpful. It seems like an opportunity. So just wanted to, to learn a little bit more about that, that process there. Okay. Thank you. No, I don't, I don't have any other questions. I'm happy to turn it over to other council members.
Councilwoman Gross?
Good to see people here from Parks and Rec and see you again, Director. I do want to come back to that question about making capital budget decisions and how you used the Parks Conservancy's plan to inform, sounds like even maybe the CFPC's considerations. I wasn't real clear, but I'm going to park that for a minute. And I have, I have to follow up on the question that we asked earlier today about, I asked about pools, but I left out the part about pay scales and lifeguards. So I am enthusiastic about the additional positions that you were able to add, both in Parks and Rec and DPW. And we're really, we're really happy to see that. And even though I have concerns about the Parks Trust Fund, I'm, I'm really happy that it is supporting parks operations and the payroll part of operations. But could you maybe revisit our conversations from earlier in the year about pay scales for our seasonal employees, even our, our year round employees like lifeguards, but also some of them, some of them are part-time, some of them are full-time? And just kind of refresh our minds about that and, and talk about what kind of pay we'll see in our goal to increase all of the workers who were not making even $15 an hour? I'm not sure who that question gets directed at.
Yep, I can, um, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. I can address that. You know, we we came boldly forward with a proposal for $15 an hour for all of our seasonal and full year hires. We worked really closely with the Budget Office to try to make those numbers work and they, they didn't, they didn't work to the scale that we were able to do it across the board for all of the folks who would be included in our operating budget and in our trust funds. But it was something that we put forward and that we pushed to want to see. That said, we did work with the Budget Office on being able to arrange for a different sort of scale for the lifeguards that is better than it was previously. It's not perfect. It's certainly, you know, something that we're going to need to continue to work at together, but the, the scale that's in there now for lifeguards allows for greater flexibility for our aquatics team to make sure that they can, you know, pay lifeguards and pay more advanced lifeguards and make sure that we're competitive. But it's certainly an area that needs work and it's something that we're willing, you know, we, we want to, we want to see as well.
I feel that it's worth putting in the extra energy and effort to see that we are paying not less than $15 an hour. So I understand that it's, you get into the domino effect of having to increase other people's pay scales too. I get, we heard that loud and clear when we were struggling with the issue in the summer in 2021. But I think that's definitely an area that we should continue to look at. And we, it may be more complicated than you would expect on face value, but I feel like it's worth putting the energy and effort into. So I won't spend more time here, but I will be asking what council can do to make that happen.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We agree.
Thank you. And similarly, I want to ask a really open-ended, slightly different question, which is about summer employment and the learn and earn. And I know this is kind of Councilwoman Burgess's, one of his priorities, legislative way that he helped us expand. But a couple of years ago, while I was on council, we shifted the administration of the Learn and Earn program away from being completely in-house and managed by Parks and Rec to being in the partnership with county's Partner for Work. And I just wanted to give you an opportunity to, to address, you know, if that, if that, if you feel it's meeting your needs in its current model, because there's certainly some ups and downs, some gives and takes, I think, to having created the county partnership. I'm going to say into the record, we, when I voted for it, we were told that we would have placements only from city residents and that our dollars would absolutely be carefully tracked so that we weren't subsidizing, you know, summer employment for a county resident that, you know, with nothing to do with the city residency or city placement. And so I was happy to get a learn and earn placement this summer in my council office. And while she was a student at the University of Pittsburgh, she was not a city resident. And, you know, I didn't kick her out and it was too late to get a different placement. But, and she was lovely and we were happy to have her, but that was not the way I expected the program was working. And so it raised a bit of a red flag. And so I just wanted to see firstly, if you all are filling the positions you want to fill from Learn and Earn and also, you know, what is your role in administrating the program?
So before, before they answer that question, I can answer the budgetary question. There are two, Learn and Earn now has two integrated, but separate programs. The first one is the program that we're all familiar with, which the kids under 18 all get jobs. And that's, that those dollars are paid for by the city for city residents. There is a secondary program for those 18 to, I think, 24. And those dollars are raised separately from the money we give them. That's raised by corporations and by the county and they then subsidize the older kids. So our money, for the most part, plays for the younger kids, the 14 to 18-year-olds who are in summer program. So the intern you had was paid for by dollars, not the city dollars. They're paid by matching dollars that came from other sources. Now that part I know. And so I'll let park, because I sit, I still sit on that board that oversees the program. So I know fiscally that part of it, but I'll, I'll let Ms. Vargas kind of piggyback and enter her sense of it.
Sure, definitely. So the, the internal city kind of oversight of the program is actually through the Pittsburgh Partnership, which is in HR. And so they are the direct kind of staff at the city level that are more involved in the day-to-day as it relates to recruitment of, of young people and assisting with placement. So they're in a different department. That said, we as a department have, we do continue to have Learn and Earn students who work with us in a couple of different capacities. We had Learn and Earn students out at our pools, at our rec centers, and we also did a couple of unique programs with our park rangers around, you know, being more involved in outdoor naturalist kind of education in the parks. So I think last year we probably had about 40. I could get the exact number that we personally worked to host and have at all of our centers. And we love having them. So it is still a, a program that we enjoy having young people being part of seeing what the community operations looks like for us. But as it relates to the oversight of the actual program, it's now at the Pittsburgh Partnership, which is a part of the HR department.
So, you know, in 2014, was it also at HR even when it was entirely in-house and we did not have the partnership with Partner for Work?
I can tell you, there was a, a time when it first started in the early stages, and I'm going back to Director Ashley. And at that time, we did have a program that we started it and we did it for one summer in parks. And I think him and I, we were able to hire about 14 youth. That's what I remember going back to when I know it was directly operated in parks and we were responsible for the hiring. After that year, then it was all taken over by HR and moved over out of parks. So there was a time we did have a program like that.
So it's administrative out of HR and you're getting, I mean, 40 is a lot of people. So that's really, you know, good placement numbers, I would think. And again, I won't take up too much time here, but I do have some concerns that if while we're not spending any of our money on the over 18, the 18 to 24 age range that as Councilwoman Burgess just told us, do we, so does that mean we're not, that we're not holding the program to any of residency restrictions? And it seems that those aren't actually mutually exclusive, even though we're not funding it, we could still have a residency requirement as a host. So just, just a thought there, but thank you for the clarification. All right, so that was the youth employment and that was lifeguards and seasonal employees. And then just to come back to this, the, how are we allocating our capital budgets and parks improvements when you're talking about tennis courts or concession stands or locker rooms or playgrounds? I want to say here what I said in many of the Parks Conservancy hearings that happened mostly before COVID. It was really, one of them was a week before we went into lockdown. So it's, you know, it's almost hard to remember, which is that I don't believe that they used good enough methodology in the equity plan. That equity plan, and I can show you my dozen or so email exchanges when I really hammered and pressed them after that, that hearing where we were discussing it, they deleted out a third of the city population and then did an equity analysis on the remaining two-thirds of the city. And that is unacceptable. And so I still believe and I've got the receipt somewhere in my email account and I'd be happy to share that with the capital funding committee. And I will continue to talk about that publicly because it is not an approved roadmap. Right? And we had a lot of public pushback against it. And so we shouldn't just be using it because it's lying around and it's available to you because it, it has some really big problems. And similarly, I think I've gotten a little note about the cooperative agreement. This begs the whole can of worms of the cooperative agreement with the Parks Conservancy. You know, we have 52 different cooperative agreements with the Parks Conservancy. We know that there's some council legislation to renew one of the 52 agreements. It's kind of a master cooperative agreement. And what I think we as the council are opposed to, I don't want to speak for everyone, but we've had many discussions publicly, that the Parks Conservancy should not be directing parks projects across the city. What is, what if they have been instrumental in helping us do planning and fundraising for, for our RAD parks, right? The five big regional parks. And so it is under, I think, public discussion, how the public wants them to be involved in our smaller and medium-sized parks. And again, I'm totally open to partnerships, but not for them to be a shadow government that is making the master plans for citywide allocations. So I want to just make sure I say that so you're clear about where I stand. And so we, we can all see it's in, if the public can go look at the proposed capital budgets and it's really well marked. I want to give everyone credit, it's really well marked, which projects would be using capital funds out of the trust fund? And again, just so no one gets confused, there's a welcome amount of the parks funds going into operations and payroll. So it isn't just, it isn't a $10 million capital fund thought. And so you can see that I think everyone's actually supportive of where the proposed allocations are for 2022, both in the operating budget and in the capital budget. And so that's not really agreements that I have here today about the proposed 2022 budget. It's not that. It's about really this, this bigger other conversation about how transparent and accountable and inclusive are the conversations about allocating funds in the future and how the, the way that those allocations are proposed. So that wasn't a question, so that was just a statement, sorry. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you. all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Cogill.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, ladies, for being here today. Um, I don't have any RAD parks, you know. Uh, in fact, I think the closest one is miles and miles away. I, I would venture to say it's a very small percentage of the people who live in my district actually travel and use the RAD parks. Just because, you know, through the tunnels and over the rivers. Um, however, I do have some really great, bigger, small parks, is, I guess, is a way I can describe them. In fact, when Rev was, we were visiting with the, uh, with the vice president, the first thing I'll never forget Rev said to me, um, this is why we're bickering about, you know, what we're going to do with the parks tax money. He said, I don't have this. Brookline Memorial Park, you know, so. And, and you know what? He, he's probably right. And I want him to have that. I do. I want every district to have that. I, I'm really pleased with my parks, you know. Um, you know, Moore Park, Brookline Park, Phillips Park, you know, all very unique, very beautiful places to visit. And therefore, I think that's why we don't travel to the RAD parks, but we, because we have really nice parks that are right in our backyard. So, um, but of course, these need continual, constant investments, whether it's in the, you know, the paving, the playground equipment, the fields, you know, all that comes with a great deal of expense. So, which is why I argued early on about, you know, making sure we, uh, you know, divvy that money up to where all the parks were touched. But, but I do feel like, um, you know, every district should have parks like that. Um, you know, it helps, helps promote sports, it helps promote activities, you know, and we have a lot going on in all of our parks. At any given moment, you could go to Brookline Memorial Park and there are two hundred, three hundred people there, hundred at the deck hockey rink, hundred at the baseball field, hundred on the basketball courts and in the rec center. So, so I really, really appreciate and love the fact that, um, the investments that we have going into those parks as well. So I was very pleased as Councilwoman Gross said, you know, um, I think most people should be pleased with next year's allocations. So, um, and, and I really want to, Director Hornstein, I, I really wanted to say thank you for Phillips Park for getting a cruise out there and picking up all the dead wood that has fallen from these enormous, beautiful trees, you know, but they're just kind of getting old at this point. And, you know, we had lumber all over the place and we were able to clean that up. So, so it's really nice. And the people who live there are really appreciative of it. So, um, so, so with all that being said, you know, I have constant requests as far as, um, the operation hours of the rec center, the Brookline in particular, I have a quilting class. And, um, they want in, you know, and they love it, you know what I mean? I mean, I love that, uh, I love that our facilities are used not only just for kids, but everybody and anybody in between. So, um, you know, I've not been to the quilting classes myself, but I know that aren't that open. Can you speak to that at all? Are we going to be extending our hours or why we discontinue that?
Yeah, I can speak to that for sure. It's actually good news. Um, you know, so, uh, through the last year, we've really been coming out of COVID, particularly having a hiring freeze for a while and really needing to staff up to be able to run our hours at full capacity as we had prior to COVID. Um, right now, we are on track for January third. Center's open, full, regular hours, and we'll be able to, uh, do permits still. We're still going to have, you know, mandatory mask wearing in, indoors and all of that. But we will, we have been able to hire a number of rec leaders, which is an area where we were missing like nine, which doesn't sound like a lot, but we're already a small team. And that definitely is a lot as it relates to being able to manage as many hours as we do. So the quilting class will definitely be getting back in and I will, I know exactly what you're talking about and I'll let her know.
That's, that's great. They promised me a pair of mittens. So, yeah.
Okay.
So, no, that's, that's, that is good news, you know, really. I, I love it being open. And I didn't realize there was such interest in it, but you know, I'm so happy that we're going to make it available again to them. Um, what's that? So, oh, crochet, building crochet. Is it, is it all the same? I don't know. So, anyway. So, anyway, uh, the, the other thing I wanted to touch on were, were the pools. Um, you know, Madam President, myself and Councilwoman Gross, we, um, you know, in, in lieu of Brookline Pool being, you know, rebuilt, um, we visited Dormont Pool, which was really nice. And to what Councilwoman Gross was saying before about, you know, paid individuals, the fir- very first person we ran into there was a lifeguard. We had a nice conversation with her. She was very good, very well-trained. And, um, you know, we just started talking to her and she said, oh, I worked for the city. And I said, oh, you did. And yeah, so she went from, I think, twelve dollars an hour to fifteen dollars an hour. So we lost her because of, you know, because of the, the wage, I think, more than anything. And Dormont offers a beautiful setting and everything else. So, so, uh, so, so that was just a really nice visit. It gave us a little insight as to what Dormont does. Um, and then we created the voucher program, which was really great and put it in a timely manner. Um, just curious as to the numbers on that. Do we have a number as to how many vouchers were used or what we paid to Dormont Pool?
We do. Um, you know, and I did not bring that with me. Um, I could certainly get it to you. I do know that it, it was hundreds of people went to Dormont Pool. Definitely. Um, I think we were paying somewhere like, like five thousand-ish. It was right in that area, right in the five thousand dollar area, but it was certainly something that residents appreciated. And so I do want to thank you all for being creative and, and thinking of making that connection. We had great weekly conversations with the folks at Dormont as well. And I, I do think that our aquatics director and the folks at Dormont have kind of built a nice lasting relationship based off of that as well. So.
I agree with that.
It was highly used. I'll get you the exact numbers.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just curious more than anything. I know there was many used. I, I visited Brookline and I asked John, the director there, and he said, oh yeah, they're coming in almost on a daily basis, you know, collecting them. So, so that's really encouraging. And I would encourage us to continue that with them, you know. They actually reached out to me, um, you know, in lieu of the pools, our pools not being able to open. So that's what type of community this is. They were so happy to do that for us. They, they entertained us that day. They had us over at the, the, the swimming pool. And, you know, the, for them to reach out to us like that, I thought was fantastic. And the reason why I said I'd like to continue that is because even though Mr. Hornstein has promised me more pool, more pool will be finished by summer, um, that only, you know, is part of my, in fact, I'll, I'll take Beachview where I'm from. You know, we have, I want to say, you know, eighteen thousand people live there. Okay, so, uh, and we don't have a pool that you can really walk to. Moore Pool was just kind of too far. We could go up into Councilwoman Kail Smith's district into, yeah, believe me, I, I tread slowly in your district, but, uh, quietly, but, um. So, uh, so now I would encourage us to continue that, you know. They, they, they want to continue it. They, they love helping us out. And I thought it was fantastic. And particularly for the people in the upper end of Brookline and Beachview and really parts of Councilwoman Kail Smith's district, you know, uh, you're really the closest to that pool. I mean, you know, you talk about parts of, um, Banksville there, you know, it's in their backyard. So, so I would love to see that continue. I would love to get those numbers. It's just more out of curiosity than anything.
The process went real smoothly in paying them the transitions.
Yeah, yeah. You know, Luanne, we, we negotiated with them as to, so it didn't cost any more than, than it does for, to go to the city pools. But I really believe if we wanted to take a hard line, they would have given to us for free. I really did, you know? Um, so, so they were just happy to help out. And that's the type of people they are. They're, they're great neighbors. They're in my backyard, literally. And, um, you know, whether it's our police department, whether it's the management that we were dealing with on the pools, you know, I can't say enough about the Dormont, um, community and as them lending their hand to us. I was really, really happy and, and really thankful to Madam President and Councilwoman Gross to come out and cement that deal with us because it was important at the time. Um, so, so, yeah.
We all work together and we can make things happen and it's real easy to make, um, get the paperwork and processes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And no doubt. And, and you know, this pool was only, it's not only just a place for people to swim. It's really a destination. I think it's the largest body of water, largest pool. Other, I think Highland Park rivals it, or, or I'm sorry, you, North Park rivals it as far as size. Not, I think you have more water, but we have a bigger area. So either way, you're allowed floating devices. And I encourage people from all over the city, you know, to make a trip there just for the day, just check out a new, new, new setting, new location, beautiful picnic tables and shady, great concession stand. So, so I hope we can continue that, I guess, you know? Um, I'm sure they would be willing and I hope we will.
And I just want to add, we did offer the vouchers across our whole system. So it wasn't just, um, regional specific. We had more available in that area, knowing that the, that, that access would be necessary, but we had them available everywhere.
Yeah, that's great. It was, it was really great. So, um, so anyway, uh, that, that's really it for me. Um, you know, uh, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Mr. Wilson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director and Luanne. Good to see you. And, uh, thank you, Assistant Director Strellick. What's the question I have to ask?
Uh, the, uh, uh, park reconstruction. Bill wouldn't let you ask that question in the last meeting.
Oh, well, you know, I, I think the, I think the question I was wondering is, um, how many, how many positions did we fill with the parks tax money?
Uh, we haven't filled any yet, right?
That we're going to.
We will. So in parks, we will fill, we have four of them.
That's for us, but DPW has far more. I think Chris can answer that.
Okay. What's that answer, Director Hornstein?
You're on mute, Director.
It's going to be about twenty-two positions.
Thank you. Okay. One of the things I was, um, wanted to just shed some light on is just, uh, you know, what the campaign was saying going around, we were going to do, which I think that number was in the thirties of employees. Any reason, you know, to be further evaluate why we only need twenty-two or, now I just want to, what I want to just touch on here is just what, you know, the public voted for versus, you know, any slight changes or modifications, what we would be doing. Um.
So, uh, yeah, I can actually address some of that. Um, so this is the first year of the parks tax. And, um, you know, one of the things as we were looking at this, um, you know, from the practical perspective of just, you know, how do we implement this, this great benefit to the city? Um, from the public work side specifically, um, additional workforce requires additional equipment. So I need more trucks. I need more mowers. I need, you know, those types of things. Um, and I also need a little bit more leadership. Um, ultimately, in the course of the, over the next several years, from the public works perspective, we're going to have created via this parks tax, um, and, you know, obviously this is subject to change, um, you know, as we get more input and we see how things are going, but it's in the neighborhood of forty-seven to fifty positions. The issues that we have is, is that in order to manage that, that expectation, um, if I hired all fifty of those positions right now, I would have no vehicles to put them in. Um, so I need to recapitalize our fleet and our equipment to a certain respect. Um, and I need to get the leadership positions in place first so that when we onboard those, um, labor folks that, you know, they will have, um, you know, the guidance and training necessary to kind of, to get them. So that process takes about three years, um, as I estimate. It's intended to be thoughtful. Um, and in the meantime, um, you know, we have a capital budget piece that, um, responds to that. Um, and so this year there was, um, I don't have the exact figure in front of me, but it was, it was significant in terms of, you know, how much of the, uh, parks tax contributed to, uh, capital projects. But you'll see that in out years, I've worked with the budget officer, aware of this. You'll see in, in future years that that number will begin to be scaled back a little bit as we hire more individuals and we acquire the equipment that we need.
Okay, so that makes sense.
And Councilman, can I add a little bit to that on the rec side? Um, just because there are really important rec programs, um, like capital projects that are happening. Callie Getman's a great example. Thaddeus Stevens, another, um, and, uh, for us, similarly, as we build capacity, more wonderful centers, we're going to need staff for those centers as well. Um, so one of the staff members that we've added to this year is a rec leader one. If you look at the next five years, there's the addition of additional center directors with the belief that we would be opening more recreation centers, that there'll be more going on in, in different neighborhoods based off of the capital project. So there would be down the line, um, for us to have the capacity to program, we will need more people as well. And that's part of the conversations we've been having around this tax as well.
Okay.
Hi, Councilman. Um, I think that in parks, what we were looking at when we received our funding, and not based on the positions, but on the funding, we looked at the money that would really benefit the residents for our centers. So th- these were the items that we thought that the residents, it was their tax dollars, and we want, they would want to see something that would help them, like when they would come into our rec centers. So we figured, um, when we looked inside our rec centers, what do we need? Well, we sure needed upgraded lockers in our swimming pools, for sure. We haven't been able to do that. So we realized that this money would be really a good time to start upgrading all the lockers in our pool systems. We haven't been able to upgrade any of our, um, gym exercise equipment. It's really in need of repair. This would really benefit the residents to come into our rec centers and have some new equipment because some of it's pretty old. So we looked at the park tax as being a good place to start where the residents would enjoy the benefit of this park tax money that they provided to upgrade and update our center. So, um, over time, we'll spend each year doing a little bit in each one of the centers as far as that money will go. That's the things that we looked at when our parks department, how it would help the residents.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm sure that needs done. And not that I don't disagree. I just, I just want to keep going back to, um, you know, the, the point that, you know, some people believe they're going and hitting the lever to, you know, increase, I'm sorry, increase our taxes was because of the, to make things more equitable. And I just want to be mindful of if we keep going back to the places where we spent money in the past, that was the whole, you know, the whole reason was to try to spend money in places that haven't been received. So I'm just, I, I don't know where those lockers are or where the.
The, all the pools. A lot of them are really, haven't been repaired. They're just really in nee- in need of some new lockers, gym equipment in most of our centers. We haven't had any funds to do this. So they're really in need of, um, new equipment. So it'll, it'll benefit all communities.
Okay, great. Want to go through, um, the list that was provided that, you know, the Parks Conservancy went on this big campaign about, um, they had a list of one to twenty. And so like Baxter Park was number one, and then it goes down, uh, to twenty. And so I'm just, I don't know if it's fair to compare, you know, what we're spending on, but I just wanted to try to understand, you know, because they, even though, um, you know, some would disagree and maybe I don't fully agree with how the, you know, they measured, uh, or how they quantified, uh, where, where there's, uh, a reduced, um, there's reduced equity, but we have Baxter Park. Is Baxter Park, has that been done?
Part of it was, part of it has been done already. It was done, we had a ribbon cutting for.
Okay. And I'm, I'm pleased to see Spring Hill because that made number three on where they done their calculation. Um, there's some other high ones I was curious on, like Moore, uh, well, Manchester probably definitely. But where, that's in your.
Yours.
That's yours. So, yeah, how did you come up, or maybe it was the administration or, or parks director, you know, in the past, but how was this created? Do we, were we trying to be mindful of what people thought they were voting for?
Yeah, that would be a Chris question.
That'd be a Chris question.
Okay.
Right, yeah. So I mean, I, I think the first thing I got to caution everybody is, is that in the capital budget process, at least from the public works perspective, um, you know, we put forth a lot more work than we know we'll ever get funded. Um, because we think that the dialogue of the CPFC, um, and the presentation information helps to kind of, for us prioritize that workflow. Um, and so I think that's one piece of the puzzle. This, you know, the Councilwoman Gross's kind of earlier points and earlier concerns, I mean, certainly I think it's valid to question the, you know, edificacy of the, the work that the Parks Conservancy has done. Um, I still see it as a piece of information. It doesn't have to be guiding principle. Um, and the reason that I favor and advocate going through this CPFC process, at least at this time, and certainly open to other, other processes here that are, that are equitable, was that ultimately, um, you know, those are decisions that, that the council authorizes. Um, and it's fairly seen and deliberated throughout the process. Um, and I didn't want any, um, perception. I want to, we want to be as transparent. perception. I want to, we want to be as transparent as possible about what we were putting forth and where those decisions were made.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, cause I thought, I believe that's also in our charter, the language of it being equitable. It's not that these other ones that, you know, didn't make it on our prior list, but, you know, not that this is only done, but maybe they don't need done with the parks tax money, maybe they should be fit into, like, the other part of the budget. I'm just trying to understand, you know, that aspect of it. So, cause I mean, I do like, you know, having some sort of waiver quantifying, you know, an equitable plan. And, um, you know, I'm not familiar with the whole city. I, I do know that Spring Hill Park needs done. There's several other parks and other areas that need done as well. Okay, um, now is this, uh, is this something that will be, like, moving forward every year? That we'll just be spending, is the plan to continue to spend, like, X amount on capital each year? Of the parks?
Yes.
All right, um, for the, my last question is just around the polls. So the polls are, last year, you know, we, we didn't have as much staff. And the conversation was that we really, all that training starts now. And how are we doing with that?
We have already been planning for both our training, um, which is actually gonna have to look really different this year as well. We have a concurrent challenge of, um, the Oliver Bath House being under construction, which is our typical training location. Um, so we've been working with Shelley, we actually have a meeting next week specifically around recruitment and getting out to schools. Now with COVID, um, schools open, um, it's gonna be a lot easier to do some of the traditional outreach that we were able to do prior to the pandemic. Um, and that does start now. So we are, we are working hard at getting the recruitment season started. Um, we're also looking at our training and, uh, we're looking at even getting a couple of our lifeguards from last year who are still on payroll even through the winter months, who are going to be kind of co-trainers with us. So it increases our capacity to be able to train more frequently. Um, one of the challenges, uh, I'll just mention this now, cause you guys will be getting an email from me, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Kail Smith and Councilwoman Gross, um, we are actively looking for indoor pools. Um, you know, Oliver Bath House being our only indoor pool, that's where we train. Uh, we are working with a couple of partners, we're reaching out to Kingsley, um, the Wise, um, and any creative place where we could get, um, young people trained in the off-season. And so I know you guys came up with that great list of every pool in the city, and I am going to take you up on accessing that list. Uh, I'll email after this meeting, um, because I think we could use that. So we're in that planning process right now. Our training will start right at the beginning of the year. We start recruitment for new, for returning guards, that starts early, cause we can onboard them early, and then we move into new guards. Um, of course, with our goal of recruiting as many guards as possible as we had last year. So we are actively on the, um, actively working, working on that plan.
And you think we're on track to have more pools than we did?
Oh, I would like to say yes. Um, I do think there's a couple of challenges that we'll have to talk about. Um, you know, just being real about seasonal hires, the, um, vaccine mandate is a challenge. Uh, what we're seeing is that a lot of our full-time staff that, um, have full-time positions are, you know, who maybe initially were not sure about it, are moving to do it, but we are going to lose part-time staff. And as it relates to seasonals, we've had a couple of interviews where that's been a determining factor. So, you know, one of the unique things about our lifeguard staff is they're quite young. Um, hopefully by the time, you know, a couple of months rolls around, this continues to be more normalized, and that's not a, a challenge, but it, it, it could be a challenge. Our, our, um, aquatics director, uh, shared that with us. Um, that plus, you know, uh, we are still working on, um, making sure that we can be competitive. And that is something we want to continue to discuss in terms of wages. But yes, we are, we're, we're going to be very aggressive with our, um, recruiting and training. Um, providing it more frequently earlier, and, um, now that we have, um, the schools back open, uh, being able to return to some of our traditional outreach that will get us higher numbers as it relates to getting in touch with families and young people who want to be guards earlier.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
And I do wanna say thank you for, uh, I will, I will be emailing about that, uh, polls list.
Okay, thanks.
President LaVell.
Thank you, um, very briefly, first, I want to just publicly thank, uh, Director Hornstein. Um, he's been working on a number of critical projects within the district over the, really the last couple of years, um, which have taken on many different iterations that you all may be aware of, and he's been patient through it all. And so I just wanted to thank him and all the staff, um, for what you all have been doing. So thank you first and foremost. My second question, my only real question is, how are we going about prioritizing the thirteen deliverables of, within the parts, within side of the parks tax?
Forgive me. As I do not actually have the list of the parks tax funded projects in front of me. But what I can basically say is, um, the prioritization for me would come down to, um, i- it's a rubric or matrix of, you know, how are we gonna deliver this? Um, improvement, what contracting mechanisms do I have in place or need to have in place, um, to execute? I always favor, um, construction, uh, before design in terms of like, ma- in terms of like, the personnel resources that I have at my disposal. That isn't to say that we wanna slow down design, uh, we can still kind of accomplish that, but there are parts of the design process that happened in the off-season, and so my critical part. Um, and then certainly I work with all of you, um, on that, on that issue as well. Um, and I, I can probably have that deeper, broader discussion, um, once I have the approved list in front of me.
Okay.
I could just add, I mean, our portion of this is tiny in comparison to, um, the capital projects that are parks-related, but, um, the gym equipment and the lockers that are on there for pools and for recreation centers. We have had, um, our on-contract vendor do an assessment of every recreation center, and we've ranked them based off of need in terms of the gym equipment. And the goal would be that, you know, each year we'd be able to allocate so that, you know, on a rolling basis, year after year with these funds, we'd be able to make those, um, adjustments so that there is, um, an equitable spread of that, um, that investment being, you know, visible across the system. And so similarly with pools, um, last, uh, last season, we got about, I'd say like maybe half the pools, um, assessed on their, on lockers. Um, and we're continuing to work through that for the same purpose of being able to kind of say, we know what our situation is across all of our facilities, and if we're wanting to make sure that people are, you know, part of this investment and seeing that, and particularly in places where we don't have great amenities or those are really lacking, we're able to start with a understanding of what those, those locations are. So we have started that assessment, again, it's, that's only specific to our programming, um, it's only two, I think, of the, the list here.
Thank you. Director Hornstein, can you give me a general timeframe for the, for the delivery of a new spray park?
General timeframe for the delivery of a new spray park, um, starting from scratch is going to be at least two years. So we spend one year from the time that a budget would be approved. Um, we would need to do design work. Um, and, you know, generally speaking, and I'm sure you're talking about Manchester, um, you know, we would exist, we would, uh, as we go through the budget process, I would assess the, you know, current condition at a high level, um, to help kind of identify what the critical path is likely to be, where we need to make investments. Generally speaking, you're gonna have about a year in design to get through contracting, to prepare bid documents, and then the following year would be construction. So all in all, from when the budget is passed, um, I would always recommend on a new spray park in a situation like this, um, where we have like existing infrastructure, you're gonna be looking at a two-year process.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Also, President Smith.
Thank you. I wanna thank you all for all the work that you do. And I wanna make sure that, pretty much, I don't need to say too much, cause Councilwoman Gross pretty much said everything that I would probably say on this, this subject. Um, but the, um, recruiting for the lifeguards, you're still gonna open our pools. Did I miss anything? Still open, planning to open our pools in the summer, our current pools?
What?
You're still planning on opening like the, our, all of our regular pools?
Yeah, our goal, yeah, we're staffing up to, to open as many pools as we can this summer, yeah.
Cause I heard you talking about partnerships with, um, Dormont, and I do wanna say-
Oh, no, yeah, yeah.
Dormont was great. I mean, they were so kind and, and just a really great municipality, and we do border them. And so we appreciate everything that they did, but that doesn't mean we don't want our pools open.
Oh, for sure.
We want Banksville open and Westwood and Sheridan, Ream Rec for, for us, I know. But, uh, I, I, you know, in terms of recruitment, one of the conversations when we were working on this is, um, we talked to the universities, and I was wondering if there's any possibility for, you know, some conversation with people who are taking, who wanna be phys ed teachers, that maybe they could become a lifeguard in the summer, and then they get college credits. And, um, and that might be some type of a recruitment, um, initiative. And so I just, I wanna make sure that we don't forget that those are some of the things that we talked about. That was one of the things. And there was a couple of other things that, uh, we had talked about, different ways to incentivize. And of course, the pay was a huge one, and Councilwoman Gross really championed that a lot. So I wanna thank her for that. And Councilman, uh, Colquill and Councilwoman Gross, uh, we did have a really good meeting and a good, uh, event up in, uh, Dormont, and we were really thankful to see how they run their pools and the things that they do, and it's really, I mean, a great operation. Um, so we were, I was thankful for that opportunity. But the other thing is, you're just getting ready to open, um, you're just getting ready to start the Shortier Spray Park. I just heard the director say it takes two years. Is it two years after you do a ribbon cutting or two years? I mean, was it this year prior? This year prior to all the planning, was that part of this, of the timeframe?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, the planning and the design work, that, that is part of that two-year timeframe. I mean, you've experienced that in your own district, right? The Shortier Spray Park was funded out of the 2020 capital budget for design. We finalized that design. Um, and were able to go out to bid, and, you know, that, that spray park should be done, um, sometime next year. Um, you know, weather depending and all of that, all those, you know, labor resource and supply chain issues that, um, frustrate me on a daily basis. But, um, yeah, I think that, that two-year timeframe is, from the time that the budget is passed and, and the funds are made available, that's the, that's the timeline that we work on.
Okay, that's all I needed to hear, was that you're definitely working within that timeframe, that we're not, cause it's not gonna be another two years. Because we're, I'm so excited for Shortier City, because that community does so much just to help themselves and to make sure that, that neighborhood be, remains so, you know, you know, awesome. And it's, it's one of the few things we're doing back, you know, to, for that community. So I'm so thankful for that project. I'm thankful to the administration for thinking of it and working on it. Because now, you know, I just also wanna say, some people hear, oh, it takes two years. So when we cut the ribbon, they're gonna say, it's not gonna be open for two more years, then something's gonna happen. So I can just hear all the negatives. I wanna make sure that's clear, that it's already a year underway. So it should be about a year or less, um, before it opens. And, um, I, I just really wanna thank and acknowledge your senior centers, the, um, staff at those, but they are amazing. I mean, they are really amazing. They do so many great things, and I really wish Pat Freeze and Sheridan would take that job full-time.
I wish she would.
She's amazing.
I cried so hard.
She won't, I know. She told me she won't. But she really is amazing. She's a good, hard worker. She does a lot for the seniors. They love her.
Yes.
And, um, and that's true of, you know, most of our
Awesome.
Center directors and center workers. So I just wanna thank you for this and, and acknowledge them. Um, yeah, we love, um, I think it's Gloria in the West End.
Yes, yes.
So, and, and, um, Norine up in Mount Washington. They're all great.
I acknowledge all of them.
Yeah, they do, they're just so, I, they're so patient, so fun. They make it look like North is fun. I'm thinking, I don't know, I'm not feeling it right yet.
Madam President, may I, I just wanna say, it took me three years to learn Healthy Active Living Centers.
Yeah, I'm not saying it again. You know why the seniors don't like the name?
It's so hard for me to adapt to that. I finally got it, now you're resorting back.
I am too, I know.
You know why? The older I get, the more I'm saying they're senior centers. I'm claiming, claiming-
I think we qualify now.
I definitely qualify. Um, but with that said, I, I wanna go back to the youth a little bit. I think there's so much concern about what's happening with our kids in the community. And the learn, own program, that, all that stuff is great. I, I think we could do a little bit different. Um, some, some different things, because I'm not so sure that we're getting the kids that we need to get off the street into, um, into jobs. But, um, I really would love to see an idea of a rec center north, southeast, west and central, one in each area, open twenty-four hours a day. So the police have someplace to take kids off the street. And, I mean, just as the homeless shelter should be open twenty-four hours a day, I, I think there should be someplace where kids can go to be safe and police officers can take them if they need be. Instead of arresting somebody, they take them to a place where hopefully there's a social worker, somebody else there to help them. So I really wish we would think about that a little bit, and I actually did mention that to the, um, mayor-elect Ed Gannon. He actually liked that idea as well. So I think it's something I hope that we look into, um, down the road. And that's it for me. I just wanna thank you all for your work. Uh, Councilwoman Gross pretty much said everything I would say about the park tax, about the pools. We're on it together, Deb, okay?
Can I, can I, Mr. Chair, I actually kind of wanted to give Parks and Rec one more last shout out if I could, cause there was a, another huge topic that I forgot to say thank you for, which is the meal distribution. You and I talked about it the other way.
We, we just did the park tax. We didn't really talk about parks. I, that, I need to go over the parks tax thing too. I mean, the park budget too. And so I was gonna talk about that too, under the, under the, the next topic.
Right, and I just wanna acknowledge that last year, there was, I think it was seven hundred meals at that time. It's now more than a million and a half. And so a huge, huge thank you to Parks and Rec and their efforts. And last year when I said, you know, how do we do more of this? The answer was really, we just need a few more people, because the meals were coming both from education funding and from seniors funding, and it really isn't something that we're covering in our budget. So, um, again, but thank you for being so creative and for helping so many households in the city.
Welcome. It's a team. It's a team effort. It's all the, the staff, the employees have been wonderful, and I attribute it all to them. They, they've been wonderful. Stepped right in there and-
That's why everybody thinks you're so amazing, cause you attribute everything to everybody else.
Yeah, it's them.
So Mike, can you go over the overview of parks, and I think, um, public works, I think they can go, I think they're not, I think we're done with your portion of this participation in this meeting. And so if you would go over quickly an overview of the park department, we'll have, although we've mixed some of the conversation, we can finish the conversation, cause there's some things I wanna talk to specifically park-related.
Thank you to Director Hornstein.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Director.
Digging into the Department of Parks and Recreation, whose mission is to enrich and enhance the lives of the city Pittsburgh residents by fostering lifelong learning through programs, social connections, Healthy Active Living, or senior programs, and culturally, culturally diverse recreational educational opportunities within all the city's community rec centers, parks and program spaces. Uh, for the 2022 budget, they are you right now at four million, eight hundred ninety-two thousand. That's an increase of about six hundred thousand. They oversee eighty-six full-time employees, forty-three and a half of them are within the operating budget, plus funding for their army of part-time and seasonal employees at one point three, four million this year. Within the operating budget, there's a reduction of two employees, a program coordinator, and then also two fiscal and contracting coordinators returned into one senior fiscal and contracting coordinator. Within the one point three, four million of, uh, part-time and seasonal, the, the hours for that, um, budget has been decreased by one percent. But the total pay for those, that line item has been increased by six. You know, we're discussing more pay for part-timers, so I'm sure they're still underpaid, but there is a little bit more this year. There's one change to the non-salaries. Um, the operational supplies line item is going up by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a youth uniform fund, plus another fifty-six thousand, just restoring that line item to pre-pandemic levels. Uh, Parks and Rec collects a, a number of operating revenues for us, including, um, swimming pool tags, uh, reimbursement from the regional asset district, the summer food program, uh, parks program, and renting some meeting, um, meeting rooms. They do not have any capital, um, budget projects, because DPW is in charge of, um, uh, facilities and playgrounds. Uh, just to give a, a quick sense of what we're anticipating working on this year, uh, Kelly Rec Center, Phillips, Warrington, Brighton Heights, Oliver Bath House, Hazelwood Senior Center, Jefferson Rec Center, Thaddeus Stevens, McKinley Rec Center and Moore Park Rec Center. Um, they do have one CDBG line item for senior programming, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. That's an increase of a hundred thousand dollars, and the first increase since, uh, two thousand seventeen. In addition to the operating budget, they have a- In addition to the operating budget, they have a number of trust funds. They have a share of the Regional Asset District Trust Fund with DPW, just like the Parks Trust Fund. The budget for that this year should be about one and a half million dollars. Seven and a half employees are in there. Their park ranger is eliminated and swapped for a program supervisor. They also have the Melon Park Tennis Trust Fund. Budget for the operating expenses that trust fund this year is $380,000. There's also a large capital expenditure of one and a half million dollars for either a new bubble or a new facility. I'm not sure if it's been decided on what's being built, but something's being built.
A little bit of both.
Okay. I also have the, the Senior Citizens Program Trust Fund for Healthy Active Living. It should be about $2.1 million this year. Staffing goes up by one employee to 29 by adding a, another recreation leader. The Special Summer Food Service Trust Fund, that should be about $650,000 this year. Two full-time staffers plus the money for seasonal employees. The Shenley Park Rink Trust Fund, that's back from DPW to Parks and Rec again. That's 157,000 this year. We have a Frick Park Trust Fund, about $730,000 this year. Most of it goes to, I believe, the Parks Conservancy for the environmental center there. And there's still a Phipps Conservatory Trust Fund. We just use that so they can pay us for steam. And the Parks Tax Trust Fund, which we have already covered.
Thank you very much. Ma'am Director, is there anything you want to add?
Yes. I mean, I'm thankful. Thank you all for everything we've already discussed about our department. I did send over a brief document that we put together regarding our work that we just wanted to share with all of you to kind of take a look at, you know, when you're able to. We, we're not going to read through it right now. Part of it is, you know, the work that we do is with community and with people, that it's important to us that you guys have an opportunity to really see the work. And so some of our big highlights this year, I think it's obvious that, yes, and I, I emailed everybody a copy. Yep. Yes. So if you're at home, you, you can also see it there. But we're at a very different place than we were a year ago. And one of the most amazing things is, you know, last year was all about reinventing what we needed to do to be able to get food and resources out to the community. And this year, we've been working really hard at getting back at what that work looks like now. Now that we're emerging from the pandemic, we're re-engaging our seniors and our senior centers with some really great programs. We've been able to restart in-person, summer and after-school programming and programming for little ones and doing it in a way that is safe. That, you know, involves COVID protocol, that people are comfortable. You know, another big focus of us this year has been staffing back up so that we can be back to 100% at all of our facilities. And that's been a challenge, but we're at that point now where we're really there. So our team has been working really hard to be creative about what it looks like to come back into our centers, to build community, to re-engage post-pandemic or as we're continuing to live through the pandemic and, and really bring people back together. So that's been the spirit of what this year has been like for us. It has been, again, thanks to our wonderful team that we've been able to reach so many people. As Councilwoman Gross had mentioned, over a million food meals served out to seniors and young people since the beginning of the pandemic hit this, this fall, which really showed the importance of the work that our team is doing. To be often the first people that a young person, an older adult, a family might engage with when it comes to city government. So the work that we do is really important. We've also had some really exciting upgrades in our spaces. Rec to Tech is really taking off. That is an initiative that started about two years ago and the pandemic did put a little bit of a hole. We were able to continue to build that initiative up, but we're right at that critical moment. Where next year, I mean, it's going to take off. You know, a lot of the grants that we've received, we've been able to actually see some of those investments taking place. And, you know, it is our goal that that would be something where, right now, we're focused on places we've been able to start, start and pilot the work, that it would, it would be available system-wide as it relates to our, our rec centers, really all of them getting to that, to that place. So it's a big year for Rec to Tech. It's been a big year for re-engaging our community. We also have a number of investments in senior programs that Luanne will share a little bit about. You know, it was a hard year for pools, as we mentioned, but we still had close to 100,000 people swimming in our pools this, this season. So we know how important they are. And that really speaks to that. I think that was all in terms of kind of our big accomplishments that I, I really wanted to share. But I did want to say that it's been, we're excited next year as we continue to grow. There's a lot of projects that relate to our work that are coming. Thaddeus Stevens is one of them. I had the opportunity to do a walkthrough of Thaddeus Stevens about a month ago. And that has so much potential to be a really unique facility with multi, multipurpose. Cali Getman's another, another big one on the list. We want to continue to have conversations about what role we can play as that, that facility continues to be brought online. And then we also have Warrington Rec Center, which is at the beginning stages of a design process. And that rec center has a lot of community members. A lot of young people go to Warrington Rec. And it's certainly an example of a rec center that hasn't seen a lot of love in a long time. So we're really excited about that project and all of the, the projects that touch our work. Particularly in the next year, we will see a lot of growth in what we're able to do as a department and our presence within the community based on, on those investments. And Lou, I wanted to give you an opportunity to.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. So senior centers, as many of you know, we're open back up. We've done a, just a phase one slow opening, but we are open full-time. The seniors have been coming in some slowly. We haven't provided a meal service yet. We're still doing our grab and go meals at the door. So we have them coming into the center. We're offering programs. We're trying our best to get as many programs. And we're working on new programs, which is really important to try and get some of the younger population and of the seniors. We are still doing grab and go meals for the seniors that aren't ready to come back yet to the center. So we deliver the meals Monday. What we, we hand them out Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays from 11 to 1:00 at the door for people that aren't ready to come back. And then when the people that do come to the center, they take their meals on the same day, Monday, Wednesday and Friday with them when they leave the center. But we are open all day and we do have programs. We are allowing them to bring a luncheon because they need to eat. So we allow them to come and eat because they're hungry, can't be there all day without eating. In some cases, we will try and heat up their grab and go meal if that's all they have to eat. So we want to, that's important to us that they're fed as well. At the centers, I don't know if you're aware of this, I think you are, that we've been giving out laptops for the past year and a half through a program with Allegheny County. We've called every senior or the staff has, and everyone's gotten a free laptop who's been eligible. They're theirs to keep. They're brand new. They've been given Wi-Fi connectivity as well. I had all the staff call everybody that's registered to let them know about the program. So I, I believe everybody's been notified that we can, that's connected with our centers if they wanted the laptops. So now that we're open, we have them bringing their laptops to the center and our centers are teaching them how to use these laptops, because many of them don't know how. So we, at our West End Center, we have Laverne, who's been at the center a while. And she has a program that she's created for them called Computers for Dummies, as she calls it. And she is, they're coming in droves to learn how to use their laptops.
Signing Councilman Call Kill.
It's been a successful program. And so, you know, I've asked her, you know, teach the other centers what you're doing so they can teach the seniors as well how to use their laptops. And so we're doing it at all their centers. We're doing it at Hazelwood. David and Toby are doing a great job bringing people in to learn how to use their laptops as well. Because it's important if they have them, they need to learn how to use them and not be afraid of them. We are trying, we have archery programs that we're doing at Greenfield. They love it. You'll see pictures of them here in the front page where they're doing archery. We're just trying to find new things. We have a floral arrangement program that's taken off. They enjoy that. We're doing, let's see, what else do I have here? Healthy cooking classes. Homework. They do line dancing. They, they love it there. They really enjoy it. So we're trying to expand on that. So if we're finding if something works at one center, we're taking it to another center and testing it just to see what people like. You know, we've sent out questionnaire surveys to just see the kind of activities they would enjoy. One of the things that are going on now, now that it's the holiday season, we can't have big parties, you know, because of COVID. We're, we're trying to be very careful, mindful. So right now, we are continuing with, we do a holiday lights at some of the centers. So we've got new vans. I've worked hard to get new vans that we can take to seniors places. So we've gotten, I think, three new vans, brand new shuttles, the vans, the shuttles that they hold 12 and 13 people. So for Christmas, each of the centers have, they're going to take them to see holiday lights at various locations. I know most of them are going to Clinton, PA. They're going to go and have a dinner somewhere and then take them to see holiday lights. Just, just that we need something to, you know, brighten it up and have a nice event. And so we're looking for things to do for the holidays, just to make it really enjoyable for the seniors.
Welcome to Councilman Call Kill's house.
Your house open? What's, what's the address?
It's wide open, yes, sure.
We have a good team that'll come decorate.
Sounds like a light arrangement we need to see.
We're trying to do a lot of things outdoors too when we can, you know? But one of our biggest challenges, and I've talked to Councilwoman Smith, Councilwoman Smith about it, is we're having a most difficult time trying to find part-time workers. It's just really, there's not a lot of people applying. I ask everybody, you know anyone part-time? Please, please have them call us, get them on the list. I ask the staff, do you know anybody in the community? We're short, we're down 14 part-time workers in our senior centers. I think Rec is down maybe 10 people in part-time. It's just people just aren't applying, aren't returning and it's.
What's the pay?
Right now, it's 1313. Next year, in, in a few weeks, it's going to be, it's up to 1352.
Why isn't it 15?
Well, we've, we've petitioned for it.
How much?
For 15, for every, for every.
What's, what's the amount? How much more do you need?
I can, I can get that to you guys.
You should not be paying people under $15 an hour, period. So get us the amount, tell me how much you need. And you have at least my commitment, I'll fight for it. It doesn't, it's not fair. It's just not fair. So just, just.
You can't tell other people to pay $15.
Dollars an hour. And we're not paying $15 an hour. So if you send me that dollar amount, it can't be so much. I mean, you know.
It's like, here we go again.
You know.
I can, what I can share with the budget office shared with us when we put together a proposal for something that we want to see as it relates to the budget, they do a five-year projection of what that particular line item would cost. So that's, that's information that I can get to you guys.
I'm not concerned about the five-year projection. That's not my interest. I'd rather have less workers making $15 an hour than more people. So that, now that may be the consequence. The consequence may be you have, we pay more and have less people. So I mean, I just want to, I want you to be aware of, there may be fiscal, but if that's what you want, I'm completely committed.
Somebody may work harder if they're being paid.
Paid more. So I'd rather, I'd rather have less people being paid fairly.
I, I think the difference is the, is the cost of living that does go up every year, 3%. I think that's the only difference each year. I don't know if it's the number of people that.
So if you send me, you send us the raw data, Mike here is going to be the person, he will, he and Bill Urbanic will turn it around, okay? And we'll see, we'll consider if we can be helpful. We should not be paying people, we should not be paying people, period, less than $15 an hour, period, not for any reason at any time.
We pay people to pick up trash for less than 15 right now.
We should not be paying.
Just saying, we should.
We should not, well.
I agree. I agree.
I'm, I'm that guy, you know, I'm, I'm real consistent about this, right? We should not be paying people less than $15 an hour. You can't be the moral voice of a city if you're not doing the moral thing, right?
I just don't want to do a one-off with.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about it. Yeah. We'll have some talk. It may not be this year, it may be next year. But let us, let's get in this conversation. I'm not, it may not be that we do it this year. We may do it next year. We, but we, we.
Do you want to know how many employees we have?
We have to see and figure it out, right?
And Rev, I wanted to add to that.
I brought you in, Bill.
As I told you, as I was telling you before about the lifeguard we ran into.
Hear me? Am I, am I wrong about this, Bill?
Hey Rev, I'll turn, just let me add one thing real quickly. It's, besides the lifeguard that I was telling you that we ran into at Dormont, she left the city to come to Dormont for two, $3 more an hour. I mean, certainly wage is what helps attract people and you're maybe down, but you know, if we can offer $2 more an hour, which is just a drop in the bucket really, you know, as far as, you know, finances go with this city. So, you know, that certainly should help to attract more part-time workers.
Same. We pay lifeguards 15, we're, we're paying environmental services like more.
So is there any specific questions for them? I think we've done most of this already. Bill told me that we are, that we don't pay, there's no full, we don't think there's any full-time person with the city at this point making less than $15 an hour.
They said part-time.
Yeah, they're all, these are all part-time employees, not even part-time, temporary employees.
So lifeguards would be part-time.
Part-time and temporary, not just part-time, but temporary part-time. Interns, things like that. But we'll, we'll, we'll still, we'll still work on this. I do want to say a new idea, and this really is a combination of Councilwoman Gross, Council President Smith and Councilman Wilson. I have this new idea. If we're going to start giving money to help our residents, maybe the best place to start is by those programs that we already have a foothold in, right? That there are programs such as the food program, such as the sports program that the kids do. We have these programs for these at-risk kids and at-risk families that we already are there, right? We're already partnered and maybe, rather than maybe, at least not all of it, but in addition to giving some money to help, you know, organizations, we need to, and we need to increase the investment into the things that we're providing and the programs we're providing.
I'd just say, we had this conversation in that room right there when I said we need more money for the athletic associations.
And that, but the way, the way of getting, but, but I'm saying, a way of getting it to them may not be giving them the money, but giving them the services, right? Because one of the advantages, if we provide the services, is that we already have the accounting department. We already have supervisory people. We already have facilities and buildings. So we are not, that money can go directly to stuff to the kids and less of the money for overhead stuff, because we already have the buildings and facilities, the fields and all that kind of stuff already.
Things they need for an athletic association is field dry uniforms, you know, equipment.
Those things, not.
That we can help with, but do we have any for you?
Anyway, my, my point is, my point is, we, we will, we will, going into next year, as we start to move toward next year, I will be advocating as we think about investing social service dollars. I will be, and I will be advocating for those social service dollars to be tied to partnerships with the city programming that we're already doing. So that if, that, that, so that, that those people who are using our facilities are participating in the, because we get that leverage. Director Burgis, if I'm, if I'm making some sense up, it seems to me if we, if we make that a focus, we will double, triple the impact.
I mean, I can definitely see a situation where if we have a, a sports league that we were able to give, let's say, one of these initial grants to, maybe there's a, a further conversation with those organizations around how our rec system can further support them in additional ways. So an example might be if there's a, a team that is near a rec center and they're working with their young people both on the field and off the field and they need a, a place or they need additional assistance, maybe it's around like, you know, classic support or other supports that might be possible. I, I mean, I could definitely see something like that where we could have a better, more holistic relationship with those organizations. And I do think though, the, the funding that Councilwoman Kell Smith has brought forward into our budget is a really great initial step in that direction. Because to be honest, we have a wonderful city sports league and we do have relationships with a number of leagues as it relates to being able to. Because to be honest, we have a wonderful city sports league and we do have relationships with a number of leagues as it relates to being able to assist in the, the, you know, the organization of the sport and the team, you know, and how that works. But it's, it's a bit more transactional and what happens now is, as we continue to do this kind of work with these youth grants and as we look at the model that you're discussing, Councilwoman Burgess, we're building more of a relationship and it's a more holistic way of thinking about, okay, well, now we have this great relationship with this association. And what else can we do for you? Did you know we offer this? So it's, it's a great opening conversation.
I just want to say that actually was the way it was. It was that way when Big League was here. It was absolutely that way. That's the way it worked. They'd have a meeting at the beginning of the year with all the organizations, the mayor's office, city parks, DPW, some, the chair of city parks and DP, and DPW would attend the meetings as far as I can recall, and they would say, what are your needs? How can we help? And then we'd go off that list and check that list and start making sure we addressed and did whatever we could, provide equipment, provide field dry, all those sorts of things. And so I actually suggested just to Director Hornstein recently that he does, that he conduct a meeting like that and, and find out what the needs are before we just start saying, this is what they need. Let's hear from them what they do need and let's try to minimize their, their challenges and their concerns of putting kids on the field. They're doing us a great service by helping our kids, you know, almost year-round now, they're doing these athletic associations with fall ball and football and, I mean, deck hockey, I mean, everything. It's just, the Penguins have been such a great partner with the city. I want to say that the deck hockey rinks that they have built across the city, they have been amazing, amazing partners. The Pirates used to be, I don't know if they still are.
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's great to know. But I do want to say, I know with, the Pittsburgh Penguins, they're hosting Sister Mary for Salt Save a Life today. They agreed to allow us to use that facility. Their PPG Paints Arena for a Christmas party for the kids of the city of Pittsburgh and it's going to be amazing. So and their partnership is crucial in this part. And so I think there's so many times that there, we have partners with the athlete, with the professional organizations and I do know the Penguins have been amazing for the city. I think the Riverhounds have been very helpful and a lot of times with soccer. We'll work, we're with the Steelers, I, I hope in the future with some things. I, I do know they've done some things. I don't know every, I gotta be honest. I've been out of it for a while with the kids because I used to run the athletic association. So I don't know all that they need, but I do know that it'd be great to see those partnerships increased and, and working really well because I think they're all amazing and they do a lot of good for our city. So I'd like to see them continue doing the work with our, with our kids.
And I want to echo a big thank you to, you're right, the Penguins. We meet weekly with the Penguins Foundation around programming and getting young people now that they have the Hunt Armory, we are going to be doing
I couldn't tell who was talking with the mask on. I'm like looking at her and I'm thinking
It was me throwing that.
Sorry, I apologize. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. We're going to be, you know, working on ways we can bring kids from different communities to the space to do learn to skate, learn to, learn to play initiatives. And we also have bi-weekly meetings with the, with the Pirates. And they have been incredibly helpful with city sports and continue to be even more of a partner. So you're absolutely right. They've been critical partners and, you know, I, I think that, as you, as you mentioned, that meeting, we do have a big meeting with all of our baseball and softball leagues as it relates to the beginning of the season, but there is going to be a meeting to Director Hornstein's credit regarding fields in January. And it's going to be, they're, they're actually redesigning the entire permit structure based on feedback that they received from teams.
Oh, that is so great.
And we'll be part of that conversation as well.
I would love to be included in that. But I do want to say that the Steelers have been very good and shared and with the Jasmine Nirey campus and Joey Porter and his wife purchased the property there. So I want to make sure I acknowledge that they have been helpful to our area, very helpful. I don't know what they all do across the city, but they've been helpful in our area. But all of them have been helpful in some way. I just like to see it continue and increase because kids get so excited when they see some of these, these sports people, you know? My husband gets excited too. He just heard, he saw something that, what is it? The, what is that? The old, you know, that sports team that's coming back? Maulers. He saved a Pittsburgh Maulers cutoff shirt that he had from back when he was a teenager. And he said
I don't know if he can get into it anymore, but
He said, guess who's coming back? I'm like, not that shirt.
Yeah, I just had a question about the process that we're going forward with. So earlier we did DPW and I mean, we didn't cover like capital projects with that, but this, we did Parks Trust Fund and then we did Parks and Rec. So I know we covered some small park investments, but where, what budget hearing are we going to cover like the Rad Parks?
We covered some of that this morning. We were supposed to be covering that this afternoon. So the, the, all the capital investments for parks, which is the majority of what DPW does as far as capital goes, with the exception of some of the facilities, which we spoke a little bit about this morning, should have been on discussion during the Parks Trust Fund today with the Department of Parks Recreation DPW available. I don't know if DPW is still on the line or not.
Probably not. We can't
It's fine. I'll follow up. The point I wanted to make was that, you know, Riverview Park has many challenges and many departments invest and should be investing in it. And so like, don't, we have nine, 10 landslides. And so you know, it's just unfortunate that we have to continue spending money on landslide instead of new tennis court, new, you know, we do all this bridge investment, fabulous, wonderful. It's just, I just want to just bring forward like, you know, it feels like we're in a lot, we need a long-term plan, working on a long-term plan for these, for these landslides. But that's like the baseline. That's like the road. There's only one road that goes around that place. And there's, we're, we're investing in the big ones, but I just wanted to, I'll bring it up with Director Hornstein, but there's just some other investments that we have to make.
We have the same issue with some, some of our perks. They're not necessarily rad perks, but one is Mount Washington. We have some of the same issues. So maybe we should have a conversation with Rad.
We're doing tons of investment. It's just that it's starting in a much different place than, than some other Rad Parks, you know, so it's just, we, we, it's like we go three steps ahead and then we go one step back because there's no landslide. So it's like, you know, it's not Riverview Park's fault that it landed on that, that, you know, where all the glaciers moved around and gave us this terrible, you know, these, these terrible under, whatever the, you know, whatever is causing all the landslides, the, the red beds that get saturated. But anyway.
Just if you would like a more detailed and you think it should be in a hearing form, I was hoping to get through Capitol and I apologize for not helping to start this meeting today due to some other issues going on. I'd be glad to set up a separate meeting or maybe we can combine some of the capital with, with the dummy discussion, which has the vast majority of capital projects. Director Hornstein can be, Director Hornstein can be available for that.
Okay. All right. Great.
Get out of the conversation. So you know the conversation. I'll entertain a motion to recess our budget hearing meeting.
Motion to recess.
Be a second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, we are in recess.